Make sure you are included and you're free to stick around till the end. And I'm sure everybody here is grateful.
I think, I think, I think I'm going to, I'm going to let Mr. Cullens handle this the way that I was handled. I was just shoved right on into it and I'm going to let him have the same feeling, just shove him right on in. And just, everybody just have a great time.
Thanks, Don. I think the honor and the privilege were ours. And, and don't be surprised if we call you back for some subcommittee work.
That's fine. That is fine. That's fine. Dan has my number. I'll send, I'll text everybody my number. That's what I'll do. Just, just give me a call. And it's already 7:30, so I'm going to get off the line. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Pleasure serving with you.
Thanks, Don. See ya.
You as well. Thank you. Bye now.
And with that, with it being 7:30, I will give a quick technical overview of tonight's agenda before we formally open the meeting, with the chair taking the lead on that part. You folks on the Planning Commission got probably the biggest packet you've gotten all year in terms of just paper volume. So I apologize for that, but it's a lot of things come into fruition at the end of the year. Some of these are projects that you've seen before and they're getting to the point of a final level of review. So it's more of a matter of looking at the details and having a refreshed look at the plans. But I will just go over some of the technical aspects of tonight's meeting. The nighting, night's meeting is being held virtually. It's being held on Zoom and hosted with the Van Buren Township technology and server, but being held remotely with Zoom and being broadcast live on our YouTube channel. Meeting is held remotely for public health concerns related to COVID-19 and all of our commissioners are operating remotely. The ways that you can participate, if you have not done so before, you can raise your hand virtually. You can use the chat button or you can dial star nine if you're calling in. And tonight's agenda has no public hearing items, but it is a full agenda. And I apologize, there's one typo on there. One of the first things that we'll go over as we do at the first meeting of each December is the election of officers for next year. News, new business items, we will have a review of the Ashley Crossroads South Trailer Parking and Storage Project, the Camping World Site Improvements Project, an addition to the Meyer Store, and administrative update on a project at the airport, which is reviewed primarily by the Wayne County Airport Authority as opposed to by the township. But I do provide a zoning administrative review of those projects and I do update you folks on the Planning Commission. There will be an update on our annual report of activities from this year, a brief overview of the 2021 schedule. And then as far as some update items, getting through all those action items, there's update items. Just recognizing our new incoming and our outgoing commissioners and just going over some formatting items for the next year. So with no further ado on that, I will turn this over to the Planning Commission Chair, Carol Thompson.
Thanks so much, Director Power. So I would welcome everyone to the Planning Commission meeting for the Charter Township of Van Buren for Wednesday, December 9th of 2020. And we'll start with a roll call, please.
Joan Fransway?
Here.
Carol Tom, I'm sorry, Jeff Jar?
Here.
Brian Cullen?
Here.
Brian Kelly?
Here.
Medina Atchinson?
Here.
Sherry Budd?
Here.
Carol Thompson?
Here. Thank you very much. It is time for our annual election of officers. This is something that we do annually. However, we have something kind of unique for us this year. Our vice chair has been ex-commissioner Don Boynton, and he is no longer with us, so we have a vacancy to fill there as well. And we'll start with the chair and we'll look for a nomination or nominations for the chair. So, anyone have a nomination?
Through the chair, I would nominate Carol Thompson to be the chair of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Budd. Is there a support?
There, I wholeheartedly support.
Thank you. It is truly an honor and, and it's a great group to work with, so I will accept the nomination. Are there any other nominations for chair? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations. And let me check. Director Power, do I need to do a roll call vote for these elections?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. In that case, we'll, we'll do a roll call vote for the position of chair nominating Carol Thompson.
Brian Kelly?
Yes.
Medina Atchinson?
Yes.
Sherry Budd?
Yes.
Brian Cullen?
Yes.
Jeff Jar?
Yes.
Joan Fransway?
Yes.
Carol Thompson?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you all very much. Our next position is the vice chair. Sometimes people who have other elected positions move up or over, depending on how you see the direction. So Brian Kelly has been our secretary and he and, and Don Boynton shared the liaison to the BZA. So he's taken on a lot of responsibility in the last few years. Is there a nomination for vice chair?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Fransway?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Brian Kelly for vice chair.
Great. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks, Commissioner Atchison. Will you accept the nomination, Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Thank you. That's generous. Any other nominations for vice chair? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations and we'll have a roll call vote for Brian Kelly as vice chair, please.
Perry Budd?
Yes.
Medina Atchinson?
Yes.
Brian Kelly?
Yes.
Brian Cullen?
Yes.
Jeff Jar?
Yes.
Joan Fransway?
Yes.
Carol Thompson?
Yes. Thank you, Brian. It's generous of you to take on more responsibility.
Thank you, everyone.
We also have to nominate a secretary. Is there a nomination for secretary?
Through the chair, I would nominate Jeff Jar.
Jeff Jar? And is there support?
Support.
Commissioner Fransway, thank you. Commissioner Jar, would you accept the responsibility?
Absolutely. Thank you for the nomination.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for secretary? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations and we'll do a roll call vote to elect Commissioner Jar as secretary.
Brian Kelly?
Yes.
Medina Atchinson?
Yes.
Sherry Budd?
Yes.
Brian Cullen?
Yes.
Jeff Jar?
Yes.
Joan Fransway?
Yes.
Carol Thompson?
Yes. Thanks. Thanks, Jeff. That's great. And we would also need to appoint a liaison to the BZA. Sometimes in the past, it has been one of the current officers or it could be someone else. Is there anyone who really wants to step up and say they're interested in that position?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Kelly?
Oh, I think Commissioner Atchison was going to say something.
Commissioner, I'm having trouble hearing you. Could I ask you to repeat?
I think Commissioner Atchison was going to speak up when I interrupted her.
Okay.
I would, I was going to just throw my hat in for interest to be the liaison for the BZA.
That is great. I think that would be, that would be great for us and I know you would do a great job. So, let me see, this is not so much a nomination as, well, actually it does say, it says in my notes to elect or reelect a liaison. So I will ask for a nomination, please.
Madam Chair?
I will. Go ahead. Go ahead, Brian. I'm sorry.
I'll take Commissioner Kelly.
And I would move to nominate Commissioner Atchison for the BZA liaison.
Great. And is there support?
I'll support it.
Commissioner Budd, thank you. And Commissioner Atchison has accepted. And is there any other nominations? Then we'll close the nomination and we'll do a roll call vote to elect Medina Atchinson as our liaison to the BZA.
Brian Cullen?
Yes.
Brian Kelly?
Yes.
Medina Atchinson?
Yes.
Sherry Budd?
Yes.
Jeff Jar?
Yes.
Joan Fransway?
Yes.
Carol Thompson?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you all for, for stepping up and being willing to take on more responsibility. And it looks like we'll have a good year in 2021. At least that's my plan. We'll move on to the business portion of our meeting. We need to approve the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Yeah.
I'll take, I'll take a motion from Commissioner Kelly. And who do I have for support?
Support Medina Atchinson.
Thanks, Commissioner Atchison for support. And a roll call vote, please.
Brian Cullen?
Yes.
Brian Kelly?
Yes.
Medina Atchinson?
Yes.
Sherry Budd?
Yes.
Jeff Jar?
Yes.
Joan Fransway?
Yes.
Carol Thompson?
Yes. Thank you. So our agenda's approved. Next would be approval of the minutes from the November 11th, 2020 meeting. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to accept the meeting minutes as written.
Thanks, Mr. Jar.
Support.
Commissioner Budd, any corrections or changes? Hearing none, is there a roll call vote, please?
Joan Fransway?
Yes.
Jeff Jar?
Yes.
Brian Cullen?
Yes.
Brian Kelly?
Yes.
Medina Atchinson?
Yes.
Sherry Budd?
Yes.
Carol Thompson?
Yes. All right. And so the minutes are approved. First item on tonight's agenda under new business is the Ashley Crossroads South Trailer Parking Storage, their final site plan approval. The applicant, Ashley Crossroads Distribution Center South, LLC, proposes to construct a trailer parking lot, which is accessory to an adjacent principal light industrial use, which has frontage, frontage on E Course Road. The site, parcel number 83041990001002, is within a 4.9 acre site located between 41775 and 41873 E Course Road, and it is zoned M1 light industrial. The site is located along E Course Road between Kirkford Street and Hagerty Road. And we'll start first with a presentation by the applicant.
Thank you, Chair. And at this point, we do have Dennis Schultz and Alan Dresselhaus from Ashley Capital here. So perhaps they could give a brief overview of their project and then we can get into staff reviews.
This is Alan Dresselhaus. I'll introduce morning board or good evening board of commissioners. Good to see you all again. Just wanted to give you a quick update here. We are seeking final site plan approval for our Crossroads South Building Number Three development. We are looking to get 86 additional trailer spots, fully paved, landscape irrigated, all within the requirements as set forth by Van Buren. We are looking to start this work sometime in the spring, obviously, at this point. So again, we are seeking final approval.
Thanks. Thank you so much. We'll hear the recommendations from staff and from our professionals. And then there may be some questions or some issues that we want to bring you back to talk about. But we'll start first with any overview from Director Power.
Thank you, Chair. This is just an overview of the site plan that's proposed with this project. You might look at the graphic that's in kind of a cover, cover memo for this request to show kind of how this aligns with the overall Ashley Crossroads South site. It's a little disorienting to look at just this view because you're basically looking just at the trailer, staging and parking and landscape area without seeing the adjacent buildings or frontage on E Course. But if you're looking at this screen, E Course is on the other side of Building Three in the Ashley Crossroads site, so to the north. So this, this sits between Building Three and the larger Building Two to the south. And so this is a project that, as was stated in the application, it's 86 trailer parking spaces for adjacent industrial distribution and warehousing tenants. And the process we're in at this point is that the Planning Commission has reviewed the layout, landscaping, and to some degree, stormwater and grading details and utility details as part of the preliminary site plan review. The project also has gone through a review and verification to make sure that it's consistent with Wayne County Department of Public Service Standards and final engineering review and final planning review by our engineering and planning consultants. There are no additional fire department reviews that have occurred since the preliminary site plan was presented because they had, all their comments have been satisfied before the last step, which was preliminary site plan review in September. So here we are on the, at the end of the process that involved the engineering and planning review. You have recommendations from the, our principal planner and planning consultant and from our township engineer. So I'm glad to answer any questions about the process for this project, but otherwise I would defer first to Vidya to state planning comments on the project.
Hey, Director Power. Okay, I was wondering if I was on mute. As we had summarized, the proposal before the Planning Commission tonight is to grant final site plan approval to Ashley Crossroads Distribution Center South Trailer Parking, that is on the south side of E Course Road. The Planning Commission granted preliminary site plan approval to this project on September 9th, subject to three conditions. And the final site plan approval, the step between the preliminary and the final, is basically meeting of these conditions and getting engineering done. So the three conditions that were required under preliminary site plan approval, the approval of stormwater detention system by the township engineer and Wayne County, we believe this condition can be met. There is a letter dated November 13th, 2020 from the township engineer, who has recommended final site plan approval, subject to certain conditions being met at the time of submission of construction documents. The second condition was revision to the photometric plan so that the illumination intensities on the site conform with the ordinance standards. Previously, the site was over illuminated. This condition has been met. A new photometric plan has been provided and the intensity drops off to zero foot candles at the east and west property lines. And the lighting plan for the site complies with the ordinance at this time. And finally, we had, the Planning Commission had required a light pole detail to show that the maximum height of the light pole does not exceed 35 feet from grade to top of the fixture, which is permitted in the M1 district. Now, the revised photometric plan includes a light pole detail which shows a 25 foot high light pole from grade to the top of the fixture. So at this point of time, we believe all of the conditions of preliminary site plan approval have been met. It is our recommendation that the Planning Commission grant final site plan approval for Ashley Capital's trailer parking project at the site. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kristin. And I think we'll go right to the Fishbeck recommendation and then see if we have questions or comments after we hear all the recommendations. Mr. Kammer, do we have anything new to tell us from the engineering point of view?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There isn't a whole lot new to discuss since the last time we discussed, but I will go through our comments just to, just remind everybody kind of what we looked at during the engineering portion of this. At the request of the township, Fishbeck reviewed the site plan dated September 16th, 2020 for engineering site plan approval for the proposed Crossroads South Trailer Parking project. The proposed project entails construction of a trailer staging area on the north side, as we discussed. And the construction includes the demolition of the existing roadway, proposed parking lot consisting of 86 trailer parking spots, modifications to the existing storm drain system, parking lot lighting, and then other various landscaping and site improvements. This project does not include any water main modification on the site. It also does not include any proposed sanitary sewer service or system modifications. And the main thing that we looked at, as Director Power indicated, was the storm sewer and stormwater management of the site. Currently, the site is drained into a series of onsite detention ponds that work in conjunction with one another and were recently modified when Ashley Capital improved one of the parking lots in the southwest quadrant of the site. During this project, Wayne County approval was required as the current pond was out of, the current pond was, was out of standard. And so during that project, Ashley Capital increased the size of their pond and with that included the future buildout of this area, whether it was a parking lot or a building, assuming that it would be paved at one point. So during the last review session, we requested that Ashley Capital and their engineers supply a as-built or calculation verifying that this was done. And the applicant included as-built for the Building Number Two FedEx car parking lot, as, as I indicated, with the calcs and the areas. According to their response letter dated July 31st, 2020, and the notes submitted on the as-built plans, the as-built include modifications for all possible future areas of impervious pavement, including this ITC staging parking lot area. The stormwater calculations and as-built plan sheets are considered part of the engineering plan submittal and we just want them to be included as part of the issued for construction plan set. Other than that, we had some minor comments on the overall plan set. A couple of notes that we'd like to see included and some underground utilities that we like to see labeled a little bit better, just so that when we go back and look at these, we know what we're looking at. But all in all, at this time, we are recommending that the Planning Commission grant Crossroads South Trailer Staging Project final site plan approval based on engineering review for the proposed site, subject to the minor comments listed in our letter and in accordance with the Township Engineering Standards Manual. Any of these comments will be required to be addressed in the issued for construction plan set prior to the pre-construction meeting being scheduled. If you have any further questions, I'm happy to answer them. And that's it. So thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll have questions or comments from the Planning Commission, please. Anyone? I'll check anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this agenda item. No, then I'll just ask Mr. Dresselhaus, any concerns or issues in the request, especially from the engineers? Or is everything looking good from the applicant's side?
No, on the applicant's side, we're prepared to address the concerns and will be duly noted in the final docs.
Great. Thank you so much. So one more time, any questions or comments from commissioners or audience? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Kelly?
I'd move to grant the applicant, Ashley Crossroads Distribution Center South, LLC, final site plan approval to construct trailer parking and storage on the lot located between 41775 and 41873 E Course Road, based on the analysis and subject to the conditions detailed in the McKenna letter dated December 2nd, 2020 and Fishbeck letter dated November 13th, 2020.
Great. Thank you. Is there support?
Support. Commissioner Jar?
Commissioner Jar, thank you. And a roll call vote, please.
Brian Cullen?
Yes.
Brian Kelly?
Yes.
Medina Atchinson?
Yes.
Sherry Budd?
Yes.
Jeff Jar?
Yes.
Joan Fransway? Carol Thompson?
Thank you. So the motion passes and you have your final approval. And thanks to Ashley Capital. And we look forward to seeing your development on both the north and the south side of E Course Road continue and be successful.
Thank you, board, and happy holidays and everybody stay healthy.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number two under new business is Camping World's final site plan approval. The applicant, Derek Matter Camping World, is seeking final site plan approval to demolish the east wing of their existing building and create new RV parking and storage on the site. The site is located at 43646 North Interstate Service Drive, tax parcel number 83060010001001, and is on the north side of the I-94 North Service Drive between DeWitt and Morton Taylor Roads. And we'll start first with the presentation by the applicant.
And we have Paul Tulakengas, the project engineer, as well as Alex and Brett representing the Camping World project here.
Yes, hello, everyone. My name is Paul Tulakengas with Noah and Strauss Engineers. We're the civil engineer and landscape architects on the project. And I think everyone was here the last time we, for our preliminary site plan approval meeting. So I'll just provide a quick, brief, I guess, reminder overview of the project. This project consists of a part, a partial demolition of the easterly portion of the existing building as well as expansion and repaving and as well as geometrical improvements to the existing parking lot and also substantial landscaping improvements throughout the site and reconfigured parking spaces for new RV trailer parking and as well as customer parking. So with that, I guess we'll head back over to Dan and Vidya if you guys want to show the plans and ask any questions.
Great. I think we're looking at the plans now. Is that right, Director Power?
That's right. So what I'm showing here, and I apologize, I had to downsize the plans a little bit because just for a digital upload, it made them very large. So it's a little difficult to see. But what you're looking at here is the landscaping plan associated with the project. Sometimes I like to show the landscaping plan just because it shows the layout of the site and the landscaping around the perimeter. So kind of all the design components together. But as, as Paul said, the site will involve demolition of the east wing of the building, the RV parking and sales and display areas in the diagonal parking spaces here with visitor entry in the center of the site. This, like the Ashley Crossroads South project, is the final step of review for, for the Planning Commission's part. This project was actually involved a special land use because of the sale and display of vehicles. So back in July of this year, the Planning Commission first looked at the proposal, yeah, that kind of the fundamental level of the layout and the circulation, the landscaping, the zoning compliance in various regards, and also looked at the specific and general standards of special land use for the, the sale of the vehicles. And we also took a preliminary look at engineering and reviewed the fire department's comments. So now we've taken this through the appropriate process whereby the Wayne County Department of Public Services has provided a approval letter for the stormwater design for the site, which largely relies on underground detention. And the township engineer has provided a full utility and stormwater engineering review for, for water, sanitary and stormwater and conditions of preliminary site plan recommendation from the planning standpoint. And the, the planning and zoning comments have also been reviewed again by the planning consultant. So what you now have is recommendations for final site plan approval with conditions from our consulting reviewing staff. And after this point, as with the Ashley Crossroads South project, Uh, as with the Ashley Crossroads South project, we move into the phase uh pending the Planning Commission's approval. Of uh pre-construction for the project. So, um, that's what the status of the project is. Here's the layout with the landscaping. And I will turn it over to Vidya Krishnan to talk about the planning comments.
Thank you, Director Power. Uh, as in the case of Ashley Capital, this project too is before you tonight for final site plan approval. The applicant received preliminary site plan approval from the Planning Commission on June twenty fourth of this year. Subject to nine conditions, I will go over those. The first one was review and approval of a circulation plan proposed for emergency access by the fire department and township engineer. This condition has been met. The applicant did provide an emergency vehicle access plan in their site plan packet. Reflect the changes to the proposed parking layout and all the island modifications. Township engineer and fire department do not have any concerns regarding the proposed method of circulation and find it to be acceptable. The second condition was installation of concrete serving around all paved parking areas. Uh, initially, the applicant had discussed the possibility of leaving. Some areas along the perimeter without curving, but subsequently they agreed to the condition. At this time, the site plan complies. It does show concrete curving around the entire site for all paved areas. Third condition was submission of planter details and a colored rendering of the landscape island with favors and amenities. If you look at the site plan in front of you from Service Drive to the building. There is that narrow corridor where a row of trees is shown, but is also developed in the form of. Plaza area with planters on it. And the applicant has submitted details. The planter is supposed to be a decorative, a metal pre-assembled planter with epoxy coating. And the design is durable and something that will actually last. Elements and plate outdoors. Next condition was review and approval of stormwater detention system by the township engineer in Wayne County. This condition has been met. Uh, we have received copy of a permit approval from Wayne County that is dated October twenty eighth. And the township engineer too, in their letter dated November nineteen, have recommended approval. Of the plan subject to certain conditions being met uh at the time of submission of construction drawings. The next consideration was facade enhancement. The Planning Commission recollects at the time the building was presented before you for preliminary site plan approval. Uh, they were pretty much demolishing the eastern wing but keeping the rest of the building as is just coosing up a paint. We had asked the applicant to take some effort to break up the facade so it looks uh more attractive. The structure is constructed of concrete masonry units which the applicant proposes to patch, repair and paint. Um, it is a building that is built long time ago, so there is limited scope for enhancement, but the applicant has made a good attempt. And included a blue color band on top of the facade that faces Service Drive. And that blue banding extends the entire uh frontage of the building. If you look at the top elevation, the blue banding is new. It sort of breaks up a blank facade wall with just the overhead doors and we think this is definitely. An improvement, the applicant has also added bollards in front of each one of those overhead doors painted blue to sort of hide in the elements. We believe, given the limitations of the existing building, this is a good compromise and the proposed uh facade renovation is acceptable. The next condition is provision of fencing compliant with the ordinance. Uh, previously, the applicant had desired having a six foot high fence in the front yard, which our ordinance does not permit. At this time, the applicant has revised the plan to no two and a half foot tall decorative fencing along the front lot line. In compliance with the ordinance requirement. The fence is a custom-made metal fence with vertical railing which meets the intent of the ordinance. The next condition was submission of area height lighting and other details of signage on the site. The site plan does identify the location of the existing and proposed signage. The applicant is not proposing any changes to them at this time. So the planning department believes it is reasonable to allow them to keep the signs as is at this time. We had asked for uh details of a screening fabric that was previously shown on the preliminary site plan around the propane tank. The propane tank is on, if you go to the southwest corner of the building, you can see there's a single row of parking and there's a propane tank over there. Uh, there was fabric screening shown around that. That condition is no longer applicable. The plan proposes bollards to protect the propane tank and the screening is through. Parking of vehicles in front of it and the landscaping along the service drive. So basically, the propane tank is not going to be used. And the final condition was special land use approval by the Township Board of Trustees. As Director Powers mentioned, the Planning Commission made a recommendation to the Board of Trustees at its meeting held on June twenty fourth. And the Board of Trustees granted approval for the special land use at its meeting held on July seventh of this year. At this time, all of the conditions of preliminary site plan approval have been met by the applicant. It is our recommendation that the Planning Commission grant final site plan approval. The Camping World Project as proposed. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Krishnan. Good reminders of where we were and a good recommendation. We'll go directly to the engineering recommendation from Fishback, Mr. Kamer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, as per usual, um, when we go through this planning approval process. The preliminary site plan approval, we just do a engineering feasibility uh for the applicant. Um, these plans were pretty well off uh during preliminary site plan, if everybody remembers. Um, and they have been in conversations with Wayne County for. Probably over eight months. Due to to COVID restrictions and and everybody. The timeline for all of these projects stretching out, but I will go over um to give you a good. A review of what exactly they are planning on doing, um, engineering wise and utility wise. And then, um, we'll answer any questions after I'm done. So, uh, as Ms. Krishnan mentioned. Fishback reviewed this revised site plan dated October twentieth. Twenty twenty and a revised set of plans dated Octo- or November sixteenth, twenty twenty. Submitted for engineering and final site plan review. In general, the. Project entails the remodeling and reconstruction of the building as well as the proposed construction of. The surrounding concrete pavement modifications to the existing concrete walkways. Construction of additional building and parking lot lights, construction of two asphalt RV parking lots. Construction of the propane station, reconstruction of the existing storm sewer system. Including an underground storage facility and a pump station. And the construction of a sanitary sewer service lead um or RV connection. Uh, general comments include. That landscape plans and implicat- or um. Landscape features must ensure that there are no trees. Planted within the utility easements on site. Um, this just is so that the township can properly maintain them without having to deal with trees above their utilities. As far as water main service is concerned. The Township G I S records indicate a publicly owned twelve inch ductile iron water main running east and west along an I ninety-four service road. And an eight inch ductile iron water main connecting to the hydrant on the north side of the building. This hydrant and water main are privately owned and are not part of the township uh system. But instead are owned by Camping World. The proposed water main plans indicate a three-quarter inch copper service line. From the building running to the RV parking service station. Uh, they have indicated that the building does not have fire suppression. And they, there are no other plans for modifications to the water main on site. The only comment we have for the water main is that the plans must show existing utility easements for the water main and hydrants. On site that are publicly owned. In the southwest quadrant of the site, there is a publicly owned hydrant and extension. Um, that will remain uh part of the township's system. The sanitary sewer service again is minor modifications. Uh, there is a eight inch sanitary sewer service line that runs. North and south along the west property line that connects into the ten inch public sanitary sewer ser- sewer sewer. Running along the I ninety-four service road. And the applicant proposes to install a four inch sanitary sewer lead. From the RV parking lot uh service station near the propane tank. Um, that will connect into their eight inch sewer service line running along the west side of the property. The big modifications to the site, um, as with the last project is the stormwater. Uh, management and storm sewer system. Currently, the township records indicate that the stormwater runoff. From the existing site is collected through a system of roof drains, catch basins and existing storm sewer. That eventually outlets into an open roadside ditch along I ninety-four service drive. The applicant is proposing to modify the existing stormwater system by constructing several additional catch basins. And twelve inch private or in twelve inch concrete pipes. The proposed additional inlets will capture the stormwater runoff from the new parking lots. And the existing storm system and collect them into a proposed underground detention facility. Underground facility will then outflow through flow restrictors and into a proposed pump station. Which will then discharge into the same open channel ditch on the south side of the property. Uh, it is understood that the applicant has provided information um that has been approved by Wayne County. Uh, in a letter dated October twenty eighth, twenty twenty for the stormwater management. There are some minor comments as far as the storm system go. Um, the mine, the minimum size for a storm sewer must be twelve inch diameter. There are currently a couple of pipes. On site that show them as eight inch. And the hydraulic grade line. Must be no higher than a foot below the rim elevation of any upstream manhole. Which essentially. Eliminates any ponding that would happen on site or surcharging of water through the onsite catch basins. So the applicant must look at upsizing some of their stormwater sewers on site. But this is a minor change in the overall um operation of the system. Other than that, there are some minor um site plan uh comments that we have that can be. Taken care of in the issued for construction plan set and we are recommending that the Planning Commission grant. The Camping World Project Engineering and Final Site Plan Approval based on the engineering review of the proposed site. And subject to the comments listed in our letter and accordance with the Township Engineering Standards. As I stated, the applicant will be required to address these in an issued for construction plan set prior to the pre-construction meeting being scheduled. Um, if you have any questions, I'm happy to uh answer them at this time and that is all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Kamer. I'd like to just note that we have a um. A letter from the fire inspector with all of their can- previous conditions marked off. Uh, ask Director Powers any noted, anything you want noted for the record from the fire inspection.
Uh, no, the chief fire inspector just notes that uh the review and approval by the uh authority having jurisdiction. Uh, does not relieve the applicant of the responsibility to comply. So that just means that there will be inspections and. The fire code will have to be met as part of construction uh by and large. So there were the comments that the fire department had on circulation and layout uh had been addressed at the time of preliminary site plan review.
Great, thank you. So I'll ask for first questions or comments from commissioners. Anyone? Anyone in the audience? General public comment on this agenda item? I'll check back. Maybe we could ask uh the applicant. Our engineers for the applicant to uh respond if they have any concerns. Especially um on the recommendations in the engineering letter or um anything for McKenna Associates either.
Uh, no, I think uh we can definitely work with Fishback to uh resolve the minor comments that uh were just noted and discussed.
Great, sounds great. I would like to note that um. And the, I agree with Ms. Krishnan in the review on the facade that there. Those are some nice improvements that you've come up with and I think it will make the building more attractive. And it helps to meet the requirements for the township as well.
Thank you very much.
All right, ask one more time, comments from the commissioners or the audience? In that case, are you ready for a motion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kelly.
I move to grant the applicant Derek Matter Camping World. Final site plan approval to demolish and create a new RV parking and storage at the site located. At four three six four six North I ninety-four Service Drive. Based on the analysis and subject to the conditions detailed in the McKenna report dated November nineteenth, twenty twenty. Uh, Fishback report dated November nineteenth, twenty twenty and the Van Buren Fire Report dated February fifth, twenty twenty.
Great, thanks. Is there support?
Support.
Mr. Jar, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Barry Budd?
Yes.
Mityna Atkinson?
Yes.
Brian Kelly?
Yes.
Brian Cullen?
Yes.
Jeff Jar?
Yes.
Joan Fransway?
Yes.
Carol Thompson?
Yes. So you're, have your final approval and we look forward to seeing those improvements at Camping World. You've been in Van Buren Township for a lot of years. It's nice to see that you're continuing with us and we wish you success.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. Have a great holiday.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
You as well.
Item three on tonight's agenda is the Meyer Store, Meyer Ink Store addition. Uh, they are asking for preliminary and final site plan approval at this time. The applicant Elevators Architect on behalf of the owner, which is Meyer Ink. Is seeking preliminary and final site plan approval to construct a one thousand six hundred eighty square foot addition. And related site improvements. The site is located at nine seven zero one Belvo Road. The tax parcel ID number eight three zero five eight nine nine zero 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 six and seven zero five. It is on the south side of Tyler Road and the east side of Belvo Road and we'll have a presentation by the applicant, please.
Yes, and we have Craig Armstrong and Diane Reynolds uh representing Meyer uh for this request. Um, I don't think Mr. Hedinger from Meyer is joining the call, but these are the project designers. They should be able to. Briefly uh describe the project.
Great, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing us to present this project to you uh this evening. So as you know, Dan mentioned, my name is Craig Armstrong. I'm the architect of record for this particular project. Um, essentially, you know, the overview of this is um Meyer, like many retail stores. Um, is reacting to the COVID situation where um they are trying to roll out. A digital online ordering program for curbside pickup of products in their stores. Um, obviously with uh everybody's um reluctance to travel and some of the restrictions that are in place. Ordering your groceries and stuff online and driving to the store and have somebody bring them out to you and put them in your car for you is something that is um. Becoming desirable. Um, with, again, this building is situated on the south portion of the site. It's a building addition. Um, there is a new exterior door that communicates directly towards the front parking lot where the vehicles will be staged. And um signage is provided to direct those um. People coming into the site along the south drive and to come in from the south heading north. Uh, to um keep traffic as far away from the main entries as possible for the safety of the occupants. The square footage of the building is a little over thirteen hundred square feet. Um, we have dates and modifications to the landscaping island there. Um, in order to have a net zero impervious area increase. Um, the building was also situated so that it would not be over top of an existing grease interceptor. Um, which is to the west of this building addition and in between the new proposed walking path in the building. The materials will consist of a brick veneer with some, with the metal canopy. The brick veneer colors are being chosen to align with the future remodel that may occur as early as two thousand twenty-two. Um, at that time, the, all the applicable requirements from B O D, if I have said that correctly, I think that's what it is. Give me, there's a lot of, there's a lot of planning commission meetings for this that I'm going through right now. So I don't, apologies if I don't know how the acronym is right. But all the storm drainage is being, you know, driven toward the back of the building to a gutter and downspout system that then ties into an existing storm underneath the existing building addition to minimize the affected area. And all, all lines have been evaluated for the additional water and has, and the sizes that are existing is sufficient to account for the additional storm.
Okay, that's a good overview. Anything else at this time? Have we lost sound?
No, I'm still here. We we are seeking a preliminary and final site plan review as Mara wants to get this program operational as soon as they possibly can. And Mr. Power has been very helpful in helping us achieve this accelerated timeframe.
Great. All right. We may have some questions or comments as we go through the reviews. So stay with us and we'll see where we end up. I'd like to go next to Director Powers and then we'll hear what McKenna has to say.
Thank you, Chair. So the project was, I think you got a good overview from Mr. Armstrong. There are many businesses that have had to adapt quickly to the COVID situation, whether you're doing curbside pickup for groceries or parking in a new space to pick up an online pizza you ordered. There's a lot of businesses that are adapting their layout and putting additions or new functions on their sites. So Meyer is part of that trend and we want to support from a, from a planning and development standpoint, this, this type of project makes a lot of sense. There, there are some limitations to what we can review and approve administratively. So I say that because you might be thinking in a, in the grand scheme of the Meyer site, this is a pretty small addition and a fairly straightforward concept, but the planning commission does have the role and responsibility of reviewing all projects that involve an addition of anything greater than 1,000 square feet on commercial or industrial sites. So it is something that has to go in front of the planning commission. When we're talking about the process, one of the things that you're well aware of is that you have a role in reviewing the preliminary site plan in terms of the overall layout of a project and, and getting through the big questions of site design and perimeter treatments and landscaping and utilities. And then you also have a role at the final site plan review stage. Well, our zoning ordinance also offers the ability for, or it should say it's written in a way that doesn't prohibit you from reviewing both the preliminary and final site plan together or in other words, reviewing the final site plan without first reviewing a preliminary site plan. And we staff think that that's a reasonable approach for this case, given the, the land use need and this relatively simple layout of the project and the, the scope of the site plan. So we do have a series of conditions you'll hear from both our principal planner and township engineer regarding. But we do think it's possible for the planning commission to consider the final site plan approval with conditions based on those comments. So I'll, I'll, at this point, turn it over to the principal planner and then the township engineer. And then I do have some comments from our chief fire inspector that I can summarize at the end of that.
Thank you, Director Powell. As you had summarized, the applicant Meyer is proposing to construct a 1,680 square foot building addition at the Bellevue Road store for Meyer's digital online ordering with website pickup service. The site is Zone C2, which is the extensive highway business district, and Section 3.112 of the zoning ordinance permits retail sales in the C2 district as a principal permitted use. All of the required information, basic information that requires to be on a site plan for the ordinance has been provided. The site has a total area of 39.33 acres, which includes all of the outlots to this parcel also. The legal description has been included with the tax parcel ID number on it. There are no minimum lot area or width requirement in the C2 district. There are specific setback requirements, however, and the existing building and the proposed addition both comply with the setbacks for the C2 district. The maximum permitted height in the C2 district is four stories of 40 feet. This elevation is only 14 feet high and is well within the ordinance levels. With regard to access, there are five points of access into the Meyer parcel, three of Tyler Road and two of Bellevue Road. None of the access drives are going to be altered as part of this proposal. With regard to cross access, there is existing cross access with each of the outlots that are there on this property and also to on the southwest corner of the property to the property to the south. Now, the site plan actually incorrectly showed a solid curb line across the cross access pathway that exists for the property to the south, and that needs to be removed. With regard to sidewalks, the applicant is proposing, as you can see on the site plan in front of you, a sidewalk connection to the building. The sidewalk must have a minimum width of five feet, which is required for all public sidewalks. With regard to circulation, the proposed addition is for digital orders and curb side pickup. Now, the plan does not include, I'm sure this is a very well set out of plan because that's what has been happening since the pandemic started. However, the site plan should include a little box note explaining how exactly this will work. Our assumption is that customers will place online orders and drive to the store for pickup. They will park in designated spaces, which I'm assuming will specifically seek outside pickup. And the store from inside, a store employee will bring the stuff out and put it in the car trunk. So that needs to be clarified. We don't want to work only under assumptions. The plan does not intend for customers to actually be along the curb in front of the property itself. We recommend that some form of signage be added to clarify that curb side pickup needs to park in the designated spot. So you don't have people waiting right in front where the striped crosswalk is and blocking the main aisle on the west side of the building. That's important. With regard to parking and loading, no changes are proposed to the parking lot at this time. This addition will require eight additional spaces based upon one is to 200 for those floor area. The parking lot that currently exists has got more than enough space to accommodate additional need generated. The site is located in the Bellevue Road overlay district, which brings forth certain additional requirements such as amenities in the form of bike racks. Now, the site, this addition at this time is very small in scope. Based upon what Mr. Armstrong also stated, this site is due for a full renovation sometime soon, hopefully in 2022. At such time, the site will be made compliant with the Bellevue Road overlay district requirements for all other site design elements also. With regard to landscaping, several of the standards are not really applicable to this at the site at this particular time because it is located in an area that is concealed from view. And the applicant is putting a building on the green area. However, the green area that currently exists is also being expanded a little so there is no net loss of any green space from the site. A tree removal permit is required if any trees, five inches caliper or larger are going to be removed. Applicant has noted that one tree is going to be removed to make room for this addition. Now, if the tree they are removing is five inches or larger, a replacement tree must be provided in accordance with the ordinance standards. Stormwater detention, I will defer to the township engineer to speak with regard to that. With regard to lighting, there is no information on proposed lighting for the plant. The area must be illuminated. It is a sidewalk and there are going to be people going in and out of the unit. There is possibly wall mounted fixtures on the south side of the main Meyer building, on the east side of this addition and also in the parking lot. If existing lighting is sufficient to illuminate this area, that we can need to show the fixtures. If not, they need to add at least one wall mount fixture on the west and the east sides of this addition so that it creates a safe, well illuminated zone around this addition. With regard to architecture, as was stated, the addition is to be constructed of a field gray face brick veneer with, I quote, interstate blue canopy and a metal cap bone white roof. Now, this is part of the Bellevue Road overlay district and the proposed color palette does not exactly conform to our B-rod district standards, nor does the existing building, which was built a long time ago. However, asking for the addition to be built in components, the B-rod standards at this time will make the addition not blend well with the existing building. It is going to look very obviously like an addition put on that looks out of place. At this time, we believe the architecture proposed is acceptable, keeping in mind the larger architecture of the existing Meyer structure itself. It forms a cohesive extension of the building. However, we want the applicant to be aware that in the future, when the building is renovated, it will be expected to be brought up to the B-rod standards. And at this time, the addition will also be subject to review. So any materials that they are putting on the building at this time is acceptable, but it might have to be changed in order to meet the overall B-rod district facade requirements. No changes are proposed to any dumpster areas. No additional main signage is proposed except for directional signage to show people where to come for the curb side pickup. As Director Powell said, typically, we do have a two-step process for approval, preliminary and final. But in cases where the project is so small in scope compared to the relative size of the entire lot. Now, this where a building located on one of the outlots, we would have done the two-step process. However, considering the size of the latter Meyer parcel and the fact that none of the access, circulation, parking, none of that has been changed, we believe it is a candidate suitable for preliminary and final site plan approval in one step. And the ordinance Section 12.205A4 does allow for the planning commission to make that distinction. So at this time, we would recommend that this project be granted preliminary and final site plan approval in one step, subject to the following conditions, which is removal of the solid curb line from the south cross access stride, notation of a width of the sidewalk connector, addition of a note clarifying how curb side pickup will operate to prevent aisle blockage, replacement for the tree to be removed if the tree is of a regulated tree size, illumination for the area around the proposed addition and touchy detail if any new fixture is to be installed. And finally, facade renovations to comply with B-rod architectural standards at a future date when the main building on the site is renovated. These conditions need to be addressed on a revised set of plans and submitted to Director Power for administrative review and approval. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks so much, Mr. Krishnan. We'll go directly to the engineering review from Fishback, Mr. Kamer.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. At the request of Van Buren Township, Fishback has reviewed the preliminary site plan submitted to the township on November 3rd, 2020. It was submitted for preliminary staff review and final site plan and engineering review for the Meyer building addition. As we spoke, the project entails the construction of an addition to the existing Meyer store and includes the removal and replacement of portions of the loading dock pavement, modifications to the existing storm drain system, removal and replacement or, or verification of the integrity of the existing sanitary lead, which I'll get to in a bit, and changes to the existing parking spaces designated for online ordering. Some general comments in which we typically would hit in the preliminary review session is that we'd like to see all easements proposed and existing labeled on the plans. And we'd like to get soil boarding information for the modification of the building and the upgrades or changes to the existing utilities. As far as the water main services concerned, Township GIS records and the applicant's plan indicate that there is a water main loop that loops around the existing Meyer building, running north and south and east and west. And that the project's applicant's plans do not indicate any proposed water main or water main connection to the exterior public water main as part of this project. But instead, water service from the existing building will be brought into the addition for proposed building fire sprinklers. The sanitary sewer, the applicant's base plans indicate that there are two sanitary service lines that exit from the existing southern building wall and that the civil site plans indicate that these service lines tie together near the southeast corner of the addition before tapping into the public sanitary, or I'm sorry, it's a private sanitary sewer system that services the entire Meyer building lot. The applicant's plumbing plan, hot plan, however, does indicate a single sanitary service line from the existing southern wall that we will want some clarification on. The basic idea that the applicant is proposing is that during construction and removal, the applicant will locate the existing sanitary service line under the building. They will pressure test and inspect the line to conform, to confirm that the condition of the line is intact. Otherwise, if it is found that the building line, the sanitary line has any issues, then they will replace the service line as part of their private system. The one comment that I had mentioned before is there's some conflicting information that we'd like to see cleared up between their plumbing plan and their civil site plan, one of which shows two service lines mainly, or mostly, one of them is most likely for a grease liner goes through a grease trap. Whereas the plumbing plans show one single sanitary service line that runs through the additional, or the building addition. So we'd just like to see that clarified. One thing to note is, is when you get into service lines like these, it is sometimes very difficult to know exactly where those service lines exit the buildings. And you do sometimes have to do this as an onsite location. So the applicant has noted this in their plans that once the line is located, that they will do their due diligence to test and make sure the line is still viable for service, which is a standard practice for service lines of this sort. As far as the storm sewers are concerned on site, the applicant does show the storm sewers that run around the existing parking lot. And they do show a proposed system that will collect the runoff from the existing or from the additional building roof and tap into the existing storm line that runs along or from the south wall of the Meyer building. There are two, two things to comment on this and Ms. Krishnan mentioned it. The building addition, because they are extending the island to the east, they're actually removing the same amount, if not more pavement than the roof section of the building itself. So they aren't increasing the runoff from the site, but instead swapping out the roof section for existing pavement and then replacing the pavement with a grass section. So it is our opinion that there is no impact to the existing storm system or storm management or detention system on site. So there is no need for a full system review at this time. The only comment that we had based on their storm water system was they currently had shown the storm drains, the downspouts from the roof collecting and then going into the building or underneath the addition to tap into the storm line that runs from the main building. But what we would like to see is for them to route that line outside of the building and tap into the storm sewer south of the building addition. That way, we just don't run into and they don't run into any issues in the future with any maintenance or any other concerns, clogs or anything like that in those roof drains. Other than that, this is a relatively simple building addition as far as engineering is concerned. Our biggest concern was the storm water runoff, which they have indicated is not, is an even swap. And at this time, we are recommending that the planning commission grant Meyer Incorporated conditional final site plan approval based on the engineering review of the site and subject to applicant submitting an issued for construction set of plans that addresses the comments listed. that addresses the comments listed in our letter dated December 2nd, 2020, and in accordance, as always, with the Township Engineering Standards Manual. After the submittal of the issue for construction plans, the township and Fishbeck will review, and we will issue a letter of performance for this plan specifically prior to holding a pre-construction meeting. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer at this time. Otherwise, that is all that I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. We do also have a review from the fire inspector with the plan submitted approved, you know, with the usual compliance to all of the code as they go through inspections. So questions or comments from the commission for the applicant or any of the staff, planners, and engineers?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Jar.
Correct me if I'm wrong, is there, this is a question for engineering or the applicant. Is there a gas main or a gas meter on that wall near where that addition is going in?
There is an existing gas meter. There's a, on this right plan here, next to the existing door on the existing building, there's a line running up and down on the page that is the gas meter incoming location. And we stayed clear of that intentionally because we didn't want to get too close to it.
Great. Is, is there any plan to add screening? Or is there any requirement to do a screening around that meter, given that there's going to be a sidewalk next to it?
From the applicant's perspective, we are not aware of any additional screen that is required with the sidewalk being for staff use only.
Ah, okay. That, it was just a question. I didn't have a, I didn't have a requirement in mind. I was just wondering what your plans were for it. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Jar. Other questions or comments from the commission?
Through the chair.
Here, Commissioner Bud.
I would, I would hope that when we've looked at this whole new storm sewer system for this month that's going to be added, we have looked into the water that's being pumped back into the big pond that they have and how it's released into the field in the back, because we all know the concerns we've had from residents with their flooding in their fields. And I hope this is all being considered as we're looking at this before we add more to what they've got.
Anything in response to that, Mr. Kamer?
So we, we know of the issue. We know that it is a, it is a, it is a a larger issue than just the Meyer parking lot, as we've talked about with the Wayne County drains that run along Tyler Road. But as we indicated, the addition to the building, because of the amount of removal of pavement on the site, should not increase the amount of runoff to the pond. And actually, it's, it's a slight decrease based on the size of the building and then the addition of the non-paved area being added in place of pavement. So at this time, we don't see any, any major issue with allowing the addition due to the fact that they are removing the amount of pavement they are removing.
I just want to be careful, be careful that we look at that very carefully because you're very much aware of the complaints that we've had, and I certainly don't want this to come back. And, and now we've got a problem, and it's being pushed off again.
And through the chair, we, we talked about that extensively as part of this project. We were aware of the same issue, and it's going to come down to detailed quantification of how much pavement is being removed versus how much roof is being added. So we're watching that very carefully, because if they were to increase the pavement or rooftop, which would increase runoff overall, then we'd have another, a whole other conversation and an issue where we'd have to get more into the potential design standards that, and the impacts on the pond.
Great.
What we're looking at here is making sure that we keep the net green space as positive and the net pavement or rooftop as a negative with this project.
Okay.
I wondered if, Mr. Armstrong, if you might talk a little bit about your plans for lighting on the addition?
Yeah, if, first, if it pleases, I can give you a little more information on the pond in terms of where it stands in the Meyer realm, because I have been in contact with Meyer Storm Water Management Services teams. There, there was identified that there were trees, that there was a big tree and some bushes that were blocking one of the outlets. We believe that that work was remedied in September. And per a letter that I have here from NCAP to Meyer dated November 5th, is that the immediate concerns about that outfall outlet had been addressed because those trees and bushes that were in blocking that have been removed. So we're hoping that that improved the situation. And if there's anything else, I'm sure Meyer would be very interested in learning more about what other issues might be occurring today so that they can address this again in the future. So I wanted to give that little tidbit of information that Meyer has done some remediation to this, and they'll continue to work with all the parties involved to help mitigate those concerns.
Thank you. That's really helpful. It's going to take some effort on everybody's part, I think, to begin to address some of these drainage issues along that corridor.
All right. So back to your original question regarding the exterior lighting. There are two existing wall packs on the existing south face of the building. One is almost immediately above the existing gas meter, and the other one is situated between the west, between the east side, is over top of the pair of doors that are just to the east of the building addition. So there are two existing wall pack lights that are on the building that should sufficiently illuminate the sidewalk. We also have an exterior canopy over top of this door that also has an LED light fixture that will provide additional illumination to that sidewalk. We will do our best to achieve, obtain lighting levels just to make sure that we have the required foot candles required for a path of egress and things such as these.
Okay. Ms. Krishnan, does that address some of the concerns that were in your letter?
Yes, it does, Madam Jim.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Anyone in the audience, comments on this agenda item? One more time to the commission, anything else? So this is a proposal for both preliminary and final. Are you ready to take action? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Jar.
With regard to item number three, case 20-033 Meyer Incorporated Store Addition Preliminary and Final Site Plan Approval, I move to grant both preliminary and final site plan approval as allowed by section 12.205A4 to the applicant Elevetis Architecture on behalf of owner Meyer Incorporated to construct a 1,680 square foot addition and related site improvements at 9701 Belleville Road, parcel number 83085990006705, subject to the conditions and comments in the letters of November 24th, 2020 from McKenna, December 2nd, 2020 from Fishbeck, December 3rd, 2020 from Fire Marshal McInally, the concerns which are to be addressed prior to the submittal of a four-construction plan set.
Great. Thank you. Is there support?
Through the chair, I would just like to add, Fire Marshal or Dave McInally did not review the letter. It was Fire Inspector Andrew Lanigan.
My apologies. I'd like to amend the motion busily.
Okay. Motion amended. And Commissioner Atchison, are you supporting with the amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. It's a roll call vote, please. Brian Kelly?
Yes.
Medina Atchison?
Yes.
Sherry Bud?
Yes.
Brian Cullen?
Yes.
Jeff Jar?
Yes.
Joan Franzoi?
Yes.
Carol Thompson? Yes. So thank you, Mr. Armstrong, for sharing information with us. And we look forward to Myers making this addition and more curbside delivery to customers available. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a Merry Christmas.
Thanks. You too. Item number four on tonight's agenda is the AV Flight Administrative Site Plan Update. Staff is providing us an update on an administratively approved complex including two 14,938 square foot hangars, garage, and fixed base operating FBO areas and site improvements. The location is 48193A, Street Letter A Street. The property is located at the end of the street west of Beck Road and south of Ecorse Road in Willow Run Airport of Van Buren Township. Director Powers, tell us what they got going over there.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to review another airport project. I think the first remote meeting we had this year, we were looking at another site plan proposal on the, on the side of the Willow Run Airport in Van Buren Township. And there's a broader trend of master planning and creating space and conditions for development of the, the east end of the airport site, kind of on the heels of the work that the township has done with the airport to bring water main and utility service to this site. So it seems that we're on the cusp of some exciting new development here. I will just review briefly my findings on the site plan and explain again the process of how airport projects are reviewed. You might think of these in a similar way to how you might think of public school projects. There are different areas of authority over projects that fall into the purview of different governing agencies. And sort of like with public schools, there is a different authority that's going to have the final say on the zoning and civil design aspect of a site plan at the airport. And that is the Wayne County Airport Authority in this case. So over the years, Van Buren Township has taken different roles in reviewing airport projects in the past. But in 2017, there was a comprehensive zoning ordinance update that included, based on a partnership and collaboration with the WCAA or Wayne County Airport Authority. The township will review some, some of the basics of a site plan for any project on the airport that is a permitted use under our zoning ordinance for the AP zoning district in the airport. So we'll look at things like critical life safety things, circulation, parking, loading, and environmental standards being met, such as the noise and odor and other factors, to the extent they can be addressed, being addressed on the site plan. And so we provide that preliminary zoning review. The ultimate site plan authority goes to the airport authority. And so the planning commission does not have a role here because the, the zoning review that occurs on the township's end is done by staff. But we still update the planning commission on the projects that are occurring. There was the Active Arrow project earlier this year and site plan submittal that met administrative zoning approval. The, the second project of several that are in active process of getting development review right now would be this project that you have before you tonight, which is for a company called AvFlight. It's a private aviation company, and what they're proposing to do with, and I should say, they have a headquarters in Ann Arbor and a location in Grand Rapids as well. What they're proposing to do is to build hangars for aircraft, fixed base operating or FBO spaces and garage areas. And there are renderings of the building and the civil site plan provided here. As part of the zoning review I completed, I was looking at things like the, the project meeting the permitted land uses in the AP or Airport Zoning District in our zoning ordinance. And what you see is the storage of aircraft, fitness and changing facilities for pilots, staging areas, terminals for takeoff and landing, that's all a function of typical airport. So the use is permitted by right. I looked at features, including parking. For a while, I was going back and forth with the applicant's group based on the, the number of parking spaces being proposed and just helping to make sure they were quantifying their parking spaces and not overparking the site, but accounting for the, the future development and growth. So they have parking tables that explain their need for up to the 132 spaces that they show here, including the, the need based on a potential future development on the north end of the site. They're going to start with the two hangars and the garages and FBOs on the south end of the site. Drainage is something that we don't take a very close look at because drainage is administered by a process with the Wayne County Airport Authority. Stormwater permitting is still done through Wayne County. Permanent Public Services, but it's sort of a process that's the airport itself has a lot of paved surfaces and impervious area. So there's sort of an aspect of this that looks at the overall picture of what's on the site and things like regional detention are looked at. So we don't provide our own drainage review, but we do mention it in the report. The maneuvering of vehicles getting to the site, including our first responders, is looked at as well. In this case, the, the Fire Marshal for the airport will provide the ultimate review of the, the layout and the hydrant locations for this site. But our fire department also provides a advisory review in those regards. There are some more rigorous landscaping and screening standards and setback requirements that we have if projects are immediately adjacent to Beck Road or Ecorse Road. In this case, this is at the end of the street called A Street, which dips into the airport a significant amount. So there's no landscaping, specific buffering or setback requirement from where they sit on the street that serves this site, because it's setback from the major roads. And we also do look at landscaping. It's a little bit tricky because there's an overarching safety concern with landscaping that takes precedence over the, the more rigorous landscaping standards that we would typically have. And so, well, there are requirements for landscaping in our zoning ordinance with respect to screening and landscaping based on the amount of parking you have and based on your frontage. The landscaping has to be pretty limited and pretty low based on the, the need to make sure you're not attracting eye volume of birds to the site. So what you see around the perimeter of the building is low perennial plantings and low-lying landscaping. And the building itself has brick, glass, and metal facade treatments. And you'll see renderings of the building. And I'm sorry that they're sideways, but you'll see those renderings in your packet as well. Taking a step back, I, I don't think the, the representatives from AvFlight are here on the call tonight. But I know that we will have ongoing discussions, and the township leadership is interested in sort of discussing and reviewing the master planning that's happening and all the new development that's happening at Willow Run Airport on our, in the township. And so we'll be providing probably a more comprehensive update next year in partnership with the Airport Authority that gives a bigger picture of all the, all the things that are occurring there. In the meantime, if you have any questions about this site or any other projects you're, you're hearing about over there, feel free to reach out to me the next time one of these projects. So there's other projects that are in the process of getting administrative zoning approval right now. So you'll hear about a couple of those early next year as well. And if you have any questions for me, please feel free to ask. And if you have any questions for me, please feel free to ask.
Great. Thanks, Director Power. Questions or comments from the commission? Anyone in the audience? Okay. Nice to be updated. We'll move on to item number five, which is the 2020 Planning Commission Annual Report and Development Map. So it's that time of year again too where we create an annual report part of our requirements by the Enabling Act of the state. And Director Power, you're up again to walk us through what we've done in the past year and how we're reporting it.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to go through that. It's been interesting. It's been a very challenging year for the township and for the process of planning and development had its hurdles in many communities, but in our case, we had a period of time where we, like many communities, weren't meeting. But when we did begin meeting again, we saw that development was picking up at a pretty consistent pace with where it left off. So it's been a busy year for the planning commission. But not just in terms of development, there's been some really important discussions that have been had about the master plan and about refining the zoning ordinance to address some modern needs. So I guess I'll just talk about some of the highlights from the report this year. There have been four projects where there have been preliminary site plan approvals, being the Jiffy Lube, Camping World, Hampton Manor, and Ashley Crossroads South Trailer Parking Projects. There have also been four special land use recommendations, which are almost the same as the four projects I just listed, except that there is a you would swap out the Ashley Crossroads South Trailer Parking Project with the Mobile Gas Station project had a special land use recommendation, but we are still working through the site plan details for that project. There have also been, there've been three site plan amendments for architectural reviews in our planned residential development projects, six temporary land use approvals, one rezoning recommendation to the township board. There have been three recommendations for zoning text amendments, zoning ordinance text amendments. Those have been for the limits on the medical marijuana caregivers' land use activities, the clarifying the items in the C Local Business Commercial Zoning District, and providing for a new land use type in the RM Multi-Family Zoning District. Very importantly, the planning commission has also recommended the adoption of their master plan, which has been adopted by the township board. So that's going to provide a framework for our planning decisions in the years to come. Of course, with the ability to have have the future land use and other recommendations of the plan refined. It's a process, not a destination, so there will be adjustments made and we'll revisit the master plan every few years according to the Planning Enabling Act. But it's a major accomplishment that you got the plan modernized and approved comprehensively for the township for the first time in, I think, what? Thirty, almost, a little more than thirty years. It was in the late nineteen eighties when we last had a full master plan update. So that was a major accomplishment. Some of the fruits of the planning commission's labor in terms of past planning decisions have been revealing themselves this year. There've been the Subaru project was completed. There was also the completion, near completion of the Ashley Crossroads North Buildings Four and Five. Those are getting very close to at least the shells of those buildings being constructed. And there are a couple of residential projects that are picking up into new phases of building. So Victoria Park near Morton Taylor and Ecorse Road and Cobblestone Creek on the southwest, in the southwest portion of the township. And I didn't mention at the beginning, but we have had nine public hearings, most of which have been held remotely. So we're still, like many communities, kind of testing the waters and seeing how we can improve public interaction, given that we have to do this virtually for the time being. So the other part of what was in the agenda was the map, and so this is sort of a two-part discussion because when we meet next, I will have the things that were on this list shown graphically with an update on a development map that I started at the beginning of this year. So we can see spatially where these projects are occurring, and I'll bring that back for the next meeting. And I did want to just clarify one correction to the list here is that there actually I mentioned that there were four final site plan approvals. There were actually three final site plan approvals, so that's a a minor correction to the report. And that's what I have. I look forward to bringing the report back. I'll bring this report to the board and back to you with the map of development projects.
Great. Anyone have any comments on the report? Anything to be added or changed or noted?
For the chair? Director Power is the three versus four because NEAPCO wasn't on the agenda this evening?
That's right. There was a error where I had a project that is under review right now with NEAPCO that originally was scheduled potentially as early as tonight, but did not get reviewed tonight, of course.
That's a good report. Feel like we're doing good work.
Definitely.
Through the chair?
Sure.
I would just, I mean, I'm pleased with the report that we got, and I just went out for lack of anything else to do. I went out for a drive through the township on Saturday out through Country Walk, and I could not believe the amount of homes that are in there. There aren't very many vacant lots that you don't see activity on, and for the amount of homes that are under construction. I went through Cobblestone Ridge and the other project right next door, and I didn't see any empty basements now that we have to be concerned about. It looked like everything was up and moving besides all the new homes that are back in there. So I was impressed with what they've done and the amount of work that is still going on. So hopefully, they'll keep going. And by spring and next summer, we certainly ought to have these projects pretty much full and other people ought to become looking because I understand from realtors and stuff, buying a home in Van Buren Township is becoming tough. That's good. You guys have done a good job. Thank you.
That's a lot of people working together, for sure. That is good news, right? We had quite a bit of housing stock when we came out of the recession, so.
Yes.
All right. Director Power, you want to tell us about the meeting schedule? For 2021? I think we're all so ready for 2021.
Yeah. The only thing I'll say is that we're sticking to the schedule that we've had in the past. There is probably a good conversation to be had about, now, we don't know how long we'll be meeting remotely, but the only thing that we might consider is whether the time still works for folks. It's the seven thirty time is, I think, what the township is used to, and that's what we plan to do for 2021. If we were to keep meeting in this format, you might start to think about how people can be a little bit more flexible with commutes and dinnertimes and things like that. But for right now, we're keeping the time at seven thirty and the meeting dates being the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month. So this schedule is already ready to go. I just wanted to run it by the planning commission as we typically do before the next year.
Let me just see on the commissioners tonight without thinking about it. I'll spring it out. If there was a time change, would that be of interest to you? And does anyone have strong feelings about what a different time might look like? This would just be to inform staff as we continue to move forward.
Madam Chair?
Sure, Commissioner Kelly?
I wouldn't have a problem with an earlier time period. It would actually help out with scheduling with the kids at home. Without the commute, it makes it easier to coordinate things to do a little bit earlier in the evening.
Okay, good to know. Anyone else have have an opinion to share?
Madam Chair, I'm flexible.
And through the chair, I wouldn't have a problem with it being moved. Even if we start moving back into live meetings, I think it's kind of nice not to have to start at seven thirty when you're so much in the dark and having to come home in the dark. And I think the meetings could be moved around because I think either way it would be a little easier.
Okay, good. Good to know. Anyone else? Okay, Director Power, you have some direction if and when the topic comes up again.
Thank you.
We are to general discussion in tonight's meeting, and there are several items under general discussion. I understand why Trustee Boynton, our ex-commissioner, Don Boynton, didn't want to stay with us for the whole meeting. He's probably crying about missing us so much. But we did want to set aside some time during the meeting tonight to recognize the incredible contributions that he's made over thirteen years, thirteen years on the planning commission. It's quite an accomplishment. He's not here, so we can say anything we want, I guess. I'm not advocating to roast him, but if anyone has laudatory or humorous stories to share, now would be a good time.
Madam Chair, I'm sure he'll be able to go back and look at the recording on YouTube, so I'll just say. I'll just say it was a pleasure serving with him.
I did, I was Commissioner Jarwell. I have you in the hot seat. It was nice to see you step in with some motions. I used to rely on Commissioner Boynton and Commissioner Kelly to make motions almost consistently and always. They would take turns. They would alternate off. So there's a bit of a gap now, and I'll be looking at some of the other commissioners.
I will say that one of the most difficult parts of transitioning these meetings into the virtual Zoom format is that I no longer, you know, during the year, I didn't have the benefit of Commissioner Boynton kicking me under the table to say, it's your turn, make the motion, man.
Or, Madam Chair, or I would get a look across the table, like, I think it's Commissioner Kelly's turn.
That's right. That's right. He kept all of us in line with his little looks and his little nods and directions. I also think he was a really good listener. He asked great questions of both applicants, and he listened to what residents and citizens had to say. And he would question them as well.
Right.
And I think that helped all of us. We have to make sure that we stay good at asking important questions and the questions that don't seem so important in the moment but can become very important in our decision-making. Anyone else want to say anything or remember Don in any way?
Yes, well, through the chair. As you know, him and I both being on the township board, one of us had to bow out of the planning commission, and he graciously said he would bow out so that I could stay on there. So I appreciate him doing that. I do like working with the commission, and I do like working with him. Of course, now we're going to work with him at a different level. So I look forward to that, but I'm sure if I'm not doing my job, he's going to be right there saying, oh, what are you doing? So, Don, if you're listening, or even if you're not, we appreciate you, and we look forward to working with you on the township board.
Yeah, that's great. But we do feel lucky to contribute, Commissioner, but thanks. Anyone else? Great. All right. The meeting format overview. Director Power? Some changes as we continue to Zoom?
So this is always a moving target. With the conditions of the last couple of months with state government and the expiration of some of the emergency powers of the governor, there was some confusion about the ability to keep doing remote meetings. Fortunately, the legislature and the governor moved swiftly to pass Act Two Twenty Eight of 2020, which enabled, among other things, continuing these remote meetings with few questions asked. You know, kind of for any reason, you could meet remotely through the end of the year. We had some concern that that was going to expire at the end of the year, and there would have had to be other action by our board to continue enabling this. But that appears to be something that's in the process of being resolved by the state government. It looks like there's been a few months of extension. And plus, there's also rules from, the Health Department rules about that we really shouldn't be meeting remotely or in person anyway. So we're going to probably just proceed as we've been going for the foreseeable future into 2021.
Great, thanks. And we also have a training requirement, and that's been affected by COVID and not meeting in person. But you have a plan for how we will continue to receive training as we go forward?
Yeah, that's right. So there were some significant training opportunities with the Spring Institute earlier this year when, right when COVID was starting to make its impact, and so that was canceled. The Michigan Association of Planning and other organizations have done a really good job of picking up kind of where they left off virtually and getting a lot of, making a lot of trainings available to people. That being said, the training requirement to attend to approved training classes, that's been a little bit fluid this year, but I'll make sure that we are all aware of our training opportunities going into 2021, which again are likely to be remote, things like webinars. But I'll make sure that we're tracking those, and if you see anything on your radar that you're interested in, let us know. We do have training funds available for all the planning commissioners, and I'll let you know as well when we see things.
Great. Thank you. That's helpful. And then we have a new commissioner. We were able to greet Commissioner Cullen at the beginning of the meeting, but she survived the first one, Commissioner Cullen, and it was a long one. Hopefully, it is not all this long. But it's great to have you here, and you follow some family members' footsteps on the planning commission as well.
That I am, I am. My dad served on it for, what, fifteen years or eighteen years, something to that effect.
Yeah, he did.
So. But something I've always been interested in is a third generation here from Belleville, so. And I like being part of the museum and my community. So I was very fortunate to be selected to be on this, so.
So, Brian was.
Well, welcome. I think we've become a pretty cohesive group. Everyone seems to kind of find their niche for the things that they care a lot about, that they want to raise in any of our reviews and our discussions, so please feel free to jump in and contribute any way that you're interested in.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Director Power and staff under general discussion?
I'll just add that, Brian, I had a good chance to talk with Mr. Collins yesterday, and he was a longtime educator with the Livonia Public Schools. He had some experience in the construction industry, so I think he's going to bring a really good perspective to the planning commission. We're fortunate to have him. The last thing I will ask for, just, this is a bit of a throwback to the front of the agenda. We did have a vote on the BZA liaison, and I think we missed having an alternate. We've historically had an alternate represent in the event that, in this case, Medina can't make it to a BZA meeting. So we should go ahead and just kind of formalize that and vote for a, an alternative. If, Madam Chair, if you see fit, we can make that vote as well.
You're right, and you had it on the the report or the memo that you sent, and I just slipped right over it. So let's go back and open that back up and ask for a nomination for an alternate to the liaison to the BZA. Don't everybody rush to the front.
Madam Chair, was our previous liaison Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Kelly and Commissioner Boynton had figured out a way to sort of share that responsibility. Want to talk about that a little bit, Commissioner Kelly?
I believe I was the primary for a little while, and then as things shifted a little bit with some schooling and other issues, and we alternated. and we alternated and shifted Don or Trustee Boynton into the primary role the last couple of months.
So there was some flexibility, depending on people's schedule. The BZA doesn't have the same regular meeting schedule that the planning commission enjoys. So it's not, you know, maybe sometimes you can't change your schedule to, to meet the meeting requirements.
And it made it with.
Jar, were you suggesting that you would be the alternate?
Well, well, I, I wouldn't say no. I'm very happy to back up Commissioner Atchison in, in the role. If she's unable to attend it, I'm, I'm happy to take it over. No problem.
Thank you. That's generous. I appreciate it. So we'll, we'll consider that a nomination, and is there support for that nomination?
I support that.
Good job, Commissioner Bud. So it's a Zoom meeting, so we'll have one more roll call vote, please, to appoint Commissioner Jar as our alternate for the liaison to the BZA.
Through the chair, I regret to inform you, I'm going to ask for one additional vote after this, but it should be super fast, so I'm sorry.
What else did I miss?
We technically should vote on the adoption of the calendar for next year. So I just wanted to get that out there, and I apologize for that earlier, so. There you go. One, one more thing to throw on our list.
Let's do the roll call vote for the alternate for the BZA.
Yes. Jeff Jar?
Yes.
Brian Cullen?
Yes.
Brian Kelly?
Yes.
Medina Atchison?
Yes.
Sherry Bud?
Yes.
Carol Thompson?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, all of everyone who has stepped up and volunteered for extra, extra work and extra responsibility. It's certainly appreciated. So quickly, to make Director Power happy, we have a motion to change the meeting schedule.
Madam Chair, I, I make a motion to approve the schedule.
Thank you. Richard Dar, support. Commissioner Atchison, and roll call vote, please.
Brian Cullen?
Yes.
Brian Kelly?
Yes.
Medina Atchison?
Yes.
Sherry Bud?
Yes.
Jeff Jar?
Yes.
Joan Fransway?
Yes.
Carol Thompson?
Yes. Great. All right. Anyone from the commission, a general discussion item? Anyone in the audience? It's been quite a year, you all, and for, for all of us in so many different ways. But just the planning commission itself has been quite a year. I think everyone is looking forward to 2021. So my best wishes for a happy new year and very much for a Merry Christmas to you and your families.
You too.
Same to you.
Absolutely.
That's great. That's great. I appreciate you all. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
One more thing. I'm just kidding.
Director Powers, we appreciate you. We could not do our work if you were not, if you were not guide, leading and guiding us from, from behind. Sometimes whatever it takes to get us moving in the right direction. So thanks, Director Powers, and all the staff and to our, to our professionals. We have really, really great people that work for us. Okay, a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting, please?
Madam Chair, so moved.
Jar, support.
Support.
Commissioner Kelly, and I know I like to do this, as everybody say aye. Word adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Have a good holiday.